For Wednesday, September 21st. A lot of things going on, whether it's world, state, or local. Whatever's on your mind, we'll take a moment of silence and let you pause and think about those things. Thank you. Alderman Lee, if you'd lead us all in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Mr. Crepp, Deputy City Clerk, please call the role for tonight.
Dunn.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Crepp.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Cornet.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Jobchin.
Here.
And Ortiz.
Here.
Ten, President, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. So again, good evening, everyone, as we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee, the whole. I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's following on any particular electronic device. We welcome your opinions and comments, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters, anybody throughout the region. Especially for the folks in here, if you have a cellphone, just ask to put it on silent or turn it off, simply so it doesn't get in the way of anybody talking, that's all. If you want to address the council on any particular item, please come to the podium. The microphone's above you. We'd ask that you give your name, order, address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. You have five minutes. We will be respectful of you, please be respectful of us. Thank you. City Administrator, Ms. Spiegel, anything for us tonight?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Very good. So we'll move to public hearings. We have a couple, one in community development, one in finance. Alderman Crepp and Alderman Lee will lead the community development public hearing. Alderman Crepp, please.
All right, I open the public hearing. Number one, public hearing on the Consolidated Plan Annual Performance Evaluation Report for the year ending June 30, 2022. Is there anyone here from the public to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That closes this public hearing, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Crepp and Alderman Lee. The next one is finance. Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet will lead that discussion. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open the public hearing on granting an underground electrical easement to Mid-American Energy Company across city-owned parcels P-1315B04, P-1315B03, and P-1315B02, with said easement being the west 10 feet of each parcel. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that closes this public hearing. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet. The next series petition is in communications. I have none. Does anybody, Alderman Lee?
Honor, I have two things. One of them is, I went to the Riverside's and Rich Kuhl, a former alderman, has had a tent there, and he said, "You have to go over to booth 23. You have to go over there." Okay. Well, I wandered over and I found Levi Fulker and his mother Elaine. And Levi, would you please stand up? There we go. Levi painted this. He had an entire booth of his paintings. And they were all very impressive, and this is the one I bought. If I remember right, Levi, is it still over at the Quad City Botanical Center? Is that painting still there? Yeah. Yep. So it's hanging there full-time. He goes to JFK here in Davenport, and I just wanted to recognize him because I really like Levi, and I loved his work. So thank you. And I have one more thing. Thank you very much for coming. Oh, he also has a webpage, by the way, if you want to look at some of his artwork. It's, what is it, Levi? Wait a minute. It's artbylevi, correct? Dot com? Is that the webpage? Art by Levi? No? Okay. But he's got a website. It's Levi Fulker. Thank you. Thank you. Another thing I just wanted to say, and I just want to read this into the record, but it's been brought to my attention that at least one Davenport public official has stated and/or inferred that I assisted Davenport city staff with a review of the STB draft EIS, and that I assisted and agreed with the city staff conclusion that no mitigation was required for Davenport and that the impacts would be negligible. For the record, I did offer twice and was declined to help out. So the analysis I did of the draft EIS was independent of my role of any city efforts and my role as an elected official. And my conclusions, which differ from those made by the city and the Washington DC expert, are based on my 40 years of expertise and continuing experience as president of environmental planning strategies and a person familiar with the local riverfront issues. I respectfully request that all such inferences or statements about my involvement stop, and I state that I am free to use my independent analyses in any way I wish as president of environmental planning strategies. And I will, of course, continue to abide by the agreement between the city of Davenport and CP not to comment on the merger itself. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, sir. Can you hear me? I just want to thank you for having this opportunity to speak. There's a pretty busy weekend this evening, I mean, this weekend. If you guys don't have anything going on, a really good friend of mine, James Jones, will be speaking at the Prayer Breakfast on Saturday. Don't know the information, just throwing that out there, but it's everywhere. CNBC is having a block party, and my mother and NAACP will be having their Freedom Fund banquet. So Saturday is a really jam-packed day at the Kelly household. Not mine, hers. So anyway, there's things to do if you guys are looking for something to do this weekend. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Alderman Jobchin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks to Alderman Lee for pointing out, Mr. Levi didn't know wonderful JFK Crusaders in the house. And Levi, tell Mr. Ryan that none of your homework will be late the rest of the year because you do great work.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. Anybody else? Very good. We'll move on to our items of discussion. We have four under, four items of discussion, community development, finance, public safety, public works. The first one is community development. Alderman Crepp and Alderman Lee will discuss. Alderman Crepp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a first consideration ordinance expanding the boundaries of the central city and north urban revitalization areas. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Okay. Seeing no one, this item moves on. Item number two, it's a first consideration ordinance for case REZ 22-04, being the request of SCI Iowa Funeral Services, Inc. to establish a planned unit development at 1200 East 39th Street to grant an exception to allow for a reception facility under the SOS Open Space District. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Alderman Crepp. I just want to thank the staff. This was, you know, something that came before us in the past with our new zoning ordinance, which carefully looked throughout the city and at exceptions to zoning and how our old zoning code had impacted the city. We've had to do tweaks to it, and this is one, and I think it's a great, I think this can be a great benefit for the company, but also I think the staff's done a wonderful job in coming up with this, planning and zoning and doing their work. So I'm glad to see this back in front of us with what I hope is a happy solution for everyone. So thank you.
Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you. And I said this yesterday at management update, but I'm very protective of open space in Davenport and the open space zoning, and I'm very glad that we have that zoning. And I think that staff came up with a really good answer for this. That'll help a lot of people while still maintaining the open space zoning code the way it is. Thank you.
Alderman Cornet.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to thank staff as well for coming up with a good solution to a problem that arose in my ward. And like, thank them for their hard work and really appreciate your help. Thank you very much.
All right. Laura, could you come up and answer a question for me? So when this was going to be rezoned to commercial, some aldermen had expressed some support for maybe putting some limitations on how late this place can operate. But under the PUD, I don't think that's necessary. Could you explain to the council why that is?
Sure. Laura Berkeley Development Neighborhood Services. It's staff's belief that there are other city codes that would cover the needs associated with being open certain hours, and it's in particular noise-related. So staff does not believe it's necessary to put any kind of restrictions in terms of timeframes for them to be open and closed.
All right. Thank you. So seeing no one else, I would just echo the sentiments of my colleagues that this is a good resolution that we've come to. We were able to maintain the integrity of our zoning codes, but allow the petitioner to do something with their property that makes sense for their property, and hopefully it will be supported. So we'll move on to item number three. Item number three is a resolution of support for case ANX 22-02 for the annexation of 25.84 acres, more or less, of territory located at the southwest corner of Sloper Town Road and Hillendale Road to the city of Davenport, Iowa. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Any comments from the council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And that's it. Alderwoman Lee, would you please set our agenda?
Thank you very much. I move that items one, two, and three be placed on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that concludes community development, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Crepp and Alderman Lee. The next series, public safety. Alderman Jobchin and Alderwoman Dickman will discuss. Alderman Jobchin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item under public safety agenda is a third consideration ordinance amending Schedule 7, No Parking, of Chapter 10.96 of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa, by adding Bush Avenue along the east side from Middle Road south to the alley. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number two, third consideration ordinance amending Chapter 10.96 of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa, entitled Schedules, by making various changes to Schedules 2, 5, and 14 to implement a change in traffic flow for Third and Fourth Streets between River Drive and Marquette Street. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Please step to the podium, name, order, address.
Ron Swender, Davenport Rock Island, Atumla. I've spoke on this agenda. And what I heard before is, well, it was a two-way before. We should be okay. No. That's back in the 50s. Come on, let's be realistic. You guys still don't have a dollar amount. I think this is a bad decision. I think it needs to be voted down and brought back before this council. It has some good and some bad to it. You have thousands of people saying no on the petition. Thousands saying no. Phone calls, emails. For 6% of the population. You have spent millions downtown. When is it time for the rest of the wards? Is this going to be beneficial? You spent a million dollars on air conditioning for Skyboxes. How many people are going to use that? You know, we've done many projects downtown. But this is one. I urge, please vote no. Please bring it back with some figures and facts because taxpayers are going to be on the hook. If this thing runs $10 million, where are you going to come up with the other money? You know? Angles are wrong. Off River Drive. The standards from the 50s, when it was a two-way, nowhere near meet the standards of today. You have a few hundred businessmen that want this changed because their properties be better. It's amazing that a short amount of people, when you don't even have a layout or a cost, like I said before, it's not a good business decision. I urge you to vote no. If you want to bring it back, bring it back. But as of now, to put the taxpayers on the hook for an unknown amount is utterly ridiculous. You, as a council, have been very good in our finances and the decisions. And like the guy said before, I'm not going to change your minds on the ones that are set, but you know what? You need to take a long, hard look at what the people want, not just a few hundred businessmen, people that own buildings downtown. Sure, 70 cities. Out of how many? How many people have flood protection that we chose not to? Being someone else who's doing it doesn't mean it's right for this city. I urge you to vote no. This is a bad decision. A bad decision which could possibly cost millions to the taxpayer. Paint and signage ain't going to do it, folks. And no one knows how it's going to be laid out. I've been downtown several times, semis blocking, two ways, two lanes, three lanes with a turn lane. No one knows. Like the mayor says, it's a blank slate that our city staff will have to figure out. And I don't think that's the right way to go. So I urge you, please. You haven't amended this, you want to extend it, you've waited till the last reading. I don't think that's right. So my opinion, it's a bad decision. Please vote no for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please step to the podium, name, order, address.
Tim Baldwin. Don't live in Davenport, I'm a downtown business owner, Davenport developer, front street, Democrat law office, Pierce School office in the village. Just want to echo once again my support for this project. It's time, progress. We need to move forward and get this done. And I think I speak for most of the downtown property owners, downtown business owners. We're all in the same boat. Doesn't take much of a drive around downtown right now to see what's happening with all the construction taking place and how difficult it is to get around downtown. And I'm sure all of you would understand it's, or think it's fairly easy, but put yourselves in the shoes of somebody who's making a first visit to downtown. It's almost impossible to make your way around right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please step to the podium, name, order, address.
Candy Pasternak. Oh, I apologize. Candy Pasternak, a resident of Sixth Ward and a business operator in the Third Ward. And thank you for your time and attention to this matter. As I talk about taking your time and your attention to this matter, the city has, within its resources, numerous studies that have been done in the past, dating even clear back to the Davenport In Motion Study from 2010 that support not only the technical feasibility of the conversion, but also the positive economic impact the conversion will have for the city of Davenport, not just downtown, but the entire city. So again, I would urge you to support this particular change and the conversion of the one-ways to two-ways, and appreciate your consideration of my comments.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please step to the podium, name, order, address.
Dale Gilmore, Sixth Ward. I hadn't really prepared anything, but let me, an idea I think that would have squashed this from the beginning. Let's just take a block, any block. And let's say this block has 15 parking spots in front. Okay, now, if you do this, now you're going to have, say, two loading zones per block. That's three spots here, three spots there. Now you're down to nine. Now you have a bus stop, that's going to take three stops. So now you're down to six. You're going to have to have at least one handicap parking, you're down to five. A fire hydrant, you're down to one. Now you tell the owner of Boozy's, "We're going to take the 15 spots in front of your business, and we're going to give you nine," or give you four, and see what they say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please step to the podium, name, order, address.
William Pamper, Seventh Ward. Just a few thoughts on this. I generally don't speak in front of the council. You know, as downtown businessmen as such, I'm sure when they start a business, they do all the financial planning and have a game plan. As he had said, we don't. All right? Are we throwing money for a project that may cost triple? Okay. I got thinking about that. Well, you know, here's a way to take and offset some of that financial cost. Yes, we used to have two-lane streets down here in Davenport. Yes, we also had trolley cars that ran on those two-lane streets. That's the reason they went to one-ways, one of the reasons. Did a little research on that. Second, here's a good possibility of financial aid on the cost overruns. Downtown Businessmen Association said, "Well, yeah, we'll donate $700,000 over 10 years." Hmm. Well, let's double that immediately, before you start the project. In 10 years, are they even going to be around? Number two, well, since, you know, we're big bustling downtown now, and I'm a property owner and a taxpayer and a voter. Huh. Who's going to carry the burden? The taxpayers that pay the property taxes in Davenport. Well, let's spread that out a little bit. We used to have parking meters in downtown Davenport. Let's reinstate the parking meter and enforce them 24 hours. Not only that, let's expand it to Fifth and Sixth Streets, Iowa, Persing, and Perry. I'm sure them people would enjoy helping pay for the financial burden. And also downtown. Like I said, enforce them 24 hours a day. Interesting. Nobody's ever brought that up. Let's see how long that lasts before businesses disappear in downtown Davenport. And there's a town not too far from here, really, that has enormous amount of people that downtown, all kinds of venues. And surprisingly, they have a lot of one-way traffic, a lot of one-way streets. North, south, east, west, like we have. And that town is St. Louis. Anybody would like to see a map? I have a map of downtown St. Louis with the one-way streets on it. Gee, if it's such a bad idea to go back to keep the one-ways, then why is the town of St. Louis, which is enormous compared to us, have one-way streets? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please step to the podium, name, order, address.
Michael Gita, Sixth Ward. The gentleman said that he had trouble getting around because of the construction, which I brought up last time, was if you have one-way streets and you have construction, which we have a lot of because of older town, older sewers and everything else, you have a couple lanes that you can close and work on those sewers and stuff. And you still have a couple lanes that are open or one lane that is open with the one-way. If you make it two-way and you have to close two of those lanes, where are you going to put the two-way traffic? So the problem isn't the one-ways. The problem is the two-ways, that you can't get around downtown when you have construction. Second Street, if that had been a one-way, you could have, you know, closed off part of it, and people could have used the other half without any problem. But it's a two-way, so you had to close either east or west traffic. I mentioned also that right now with the one-way, you don't have to look as many different directions for traffic. And the gentleman pointed out that you have to look, you have to look even, you have to look with the one-way because somebody could be coming the wrong way. That's true, I understand. But you can tell me that nobody's going to make a mistake and turn and come on the wrong way or this way or that way once you become two-ways? A number of years ago, we had a lady that I believe had a major crash down on Second Street, which was a two-way street. And maybe, I think, I don't know if they killed somebody or down by Brady Street or someplace down there because she was going way too fast. Not because it was a one-way or a two-way, because she just was in error. So I, and I'm not against change. You know, if we had all kinds of money and wanted to spend all kinds of money, you know, a coffer full of money that we didn't know what to do, fine. We can go ahead and change things to two-way, and if it don't work, we can change it back to one-way. But we don't have a lot of money. There's a lot of streets. There's major streets like Locust, you know, and if you get in some of those outside lanes, it just tears the heck out of the car out because of the bumps and everything else, you know. So let's, you know, let's spend money on those streets that need to be fixed, that carry a lot of traffic. Costco should have had another entrance to there so that all these people that are up there and trying to get to Costco with the construction, they can't get in there and everything else. If there was a second entrance in there, or if Costco would have put in someplace where there was two roads coming in, we wouldn't have that problem. But we have a problem there because of only one way in and out of Costco. River Drive, we put the raised centers with the trees and things, and then we come back and we took out them down there by the gas station because the gas station complained because they couldn't get traffic in and out. Now we took out more because we needed for the flood area. So that was money that was spent that was not, it was, I'll say, an error. Should have never been spent. So we need to look at where we're spending money. And one other thing, I'll finish. My good friend who comes downtown, he goes to the bars, he comes down here to eat, he comes down to the Blue Festivals and everything else. He says, when he comes down a one-way street, he sees an open parking space, he can go this way and get in it, he can go in this way and get it. If he's coming down, it's on this side, he has to go around the block and hope he gets back there before it's filled. So he says, you know, to him, it's easier to park on trying to get off of one-way and park because you can park on both sides, you're not limited to one side. So I don't know. I guess, I'm not a businessman. I guess I don't know where they feel that it's going to enhance their business and bring them more business and bring us more economics. I mean, the people are still going to come. They're coming downtown now to the things. They're still going to come, whether it's a one-way or two-way, you know. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please step to the podium, name, order, address.
I'm Rhonda Ludwig, Quad Cities Chamber of Commerce, Director of Government Affairs. First and foremost, just thank you. I've sat in your seats before, I've served on a small city council, and it's, I don't know how you continue to look at people and smile and shake your heads, and you're so kind. So I do appreciate that. I just want to say that first and foremost, thank you for entertaining all of this conversation. I am not an engineer like those who have been speaking tonight that know which way to turn and which way the street should go. I'm simply not that. So, no pun intended, but I'm going to stay in my lane and tell you what I do know. And we know businesses in our region. That's what we represent as a Chamber of Commerce. And they are saying that this is in the best interest of their community as a whole. They're not talking just downtown or just 53rd or anywhere else. As a whole, this is a really good thing for the community to have two-way streets, and we appreciate you entertaining that. In addition, we did reach out, as you know, from Kyle Carter, your friend, that Des Moines has done this, Cedar Rapids has done this, Peoria has done this. So they too have sat where you are seated tonight. They've had to make these decisions. It's not been fun, they've been concerned. You're worried about doing what's right for the future, which is excellent. I'm glad that you're worried about that. But the reason they have given us that information is because they're saying, "Look, we came out on the other side, and we did make the right decision. We did do the right thing by our community, and it was difficult." And they were also scared, worried, worried about the next election, worried about what's best for the community. But they came out and they said, "This is what the results were. Do what we did because it works, because it is in the best interest of the community as a whole, and it's especially in the best interest of Davenport's business community." Thank you.
Thank you. Please step to the podium, name, order, address.
Good evening. My name is Katie Thompson. I currently live in the Seventh Ward. I have been working downtown most of my adult life. I have lived here my entire life on the Iowa side of the Quad Cities. I went to Garfield Elementary School, Bettendorf Middle and High School, and I went to Mary Grace University. I aged myself there, but I currently work for Front Door Iowa, which is associated with Hotel Black. I currently work for Front Door Iowa, which is associated with Hotel Blackhawk, the current Iowa. We have 147 private residences across six properties downtown. Um, I'm not gonna really talk about the business aspect, I'm gonna talk more about the safety of my tenants in my properties. A lot more families are down here, we have a lot more kids crossing streets on the way to school, a lot more bike action. Um, I've been hearing lots of talk about parking and where are they gonna park when they come downtown? Well, luckily the Davenport, uh, city provides us three parking garages so that anybody who wants to come downtown can park in a parking garage, that also generates revenue. Um, so we're not really just all worried about street parking, there are garage parking. Another thing that I hear about are deliveries. Lots of deliveries occur in alleys already. I know people see them parked in the street, but doesn't mean an ordinance can't say deliveries have to go through a back door of an alley or the driver just has to walk an extra hundred feet. So those are just a few things that I would like to say. Um, also keep in mind, when one-way traffic was put in in the 50s, there were not a lot of residents living downtown. Between Brady Street and Perry or Pershing on Third, there are hundreds of apartments. Union Arcade, Mississippi Lofts. I mean, you've got units above, you know, in private residences inside the hotel. So there are hundreds of people, if not 200, 300, 400 per building now as opposed to just people coming down to go to work, to go out to eat. We kinda have to think about the safety of the residents that choose to live downtown and choose to make it successful. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please step to the podium, name, order, address.
Hello, my name is Mike Russell, I'm representing the Hotel Blackhawk and Restoration of St. Louis. I'm from St. Louis. Um, and our major concerns are, once again, safety for our, our guests and our residents at the hotel and also the noise pollution that's causing, uh, and the complaints that we're getting from our res, our, our guests that are coming in from out of town, it's causing us revenue for people not to return to our hotel. All this, the street racing is what's happening. Uh, in, in reference to the comments made earlier about the, the St. Louis being one-way streets. I'm from St. Louis and it's a major problem down there with street racing. Uh, we have a hotel downtown St. Louis that's occurring the same problems with the, the noise pollution that the, the, the drag racers are causing. So with moving this to a two-way laying street, I think that will solve most of the problems. St. Louis is now currently putting barricades up to stop this from happening because it's such a problem down there. So it's very serious, I think that if we go with this vote, we will definitely make the right decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, go to the council, Alderman Gripp.
I was, I was not going to start off with that, but I will uh, because I happened to be in St. Louis just a few months ago and stayed downtown and noted that they were using Jer, Jersey bear, barriers to funnel their one-way streets down to one lane every so many hundred feet so that they could funnel the traffic and slow cars down. So they, they do have major problems with their one-ways and that has been theirs is we'll use Jerry, Jersey barriers every other block to funnel traffic from three lanes to one lane. So that is a true story. So I, what I, what I planned on speaking about is addressing, uh, the idea that this project, we have no clue how much it's going to cost and that it's going to be a runaway train with cost. Alright, so I, I first wanna start off. To go to Marquette, it is 1.7 million dollars. That includes all of the paint and all of the signalization, 1.7 gets you there, okay? If we want to deviate from the staff's design where they put stop signs instead of stoplights and put in traffic signals, it is 150,000 per intersection. Okay, so if you do it on Third and Fourth, that's 300,000 dollars. So every time the council would make a decision to go from stop sign to stoplight, 300,000 dollar cost all the way down, we know that, okay? If we want to extend from Marquette to Division, 500,000 dollars. If we want to go all the way down to Telegraph, which I have heard nobody say that that's what we're going to do, it's an extra 1.2 million, okay? So, we understand the cost of this. Now, due to the inflation that we're experiencing on every single project that we let in the city, could it, it be 20% more? It could, um, just like every other project. But it wouldn't be due to the fact that we don't understand the scope of, of what we're doing in this conversion. Now, the point that gets brought up is, well, you don't, you don't know about, um, River Drive, the Fourth and River Drive intersection because you're going to create a turning radius that isn't ideal according to Iowa Department of Transportation. I brought up last week, that less-than-ideal turn radius currently exists, okay? In the one-way configuration, it currently exists, you can turn from, uh, River Drive onto, onto Fourth Street and it has that less-than-ideal turn radius. So Brian, I, if you could come up, I wanna ask you a few questions about this intersection to make sure that I understand the intersection and that everybody else understands the, the intersection.
Brian Shad, Public Works.
Alright, so, I already stated this, but I want you to confirm it. The 1.7 million dollar budget at River Drive includes the signalization in the paint to convert, uh, from one-way to two-way.
That is correct, it includes all items, including removal of old paint, uh, where necessary. It's also taken into consideration the reserving project from Harrison to, uh, the West Terminus at, uh, Telegraph. So that's why it's a little bit cheaper as you look at that midpoint section.
There is currently a less-than-ideal turn radius on Fourth Street with the, uh, one-way configuration, is that true?
Correct.
Correct, okay. What is the cost if we want to fix that turn radius on Fourth Street?
If we look at both Third and Fourth Street, straightening up that angle, uh, closer to a 90-degree angle, you're looking at about 1.2 to 1.5 million.
Okay. What is it to fix it if we keep it one-ways?
The exact same, 1.2 to 1.5 million.
Okay, so currently going through Iowa Department of Transportation, um, for, for review, um, level of confidence that, uh, Department of Transportation is going to say, go ahead with, with it?
I, I would say fairly confident, uh, they've raised no red flags at this point. I reached out again today, but their traffic and safety is still going through, um, at this point. But it would be like any other intersection within the city, it's a continued monitoring, um, as we move forward every year.
So would it stand to reason if the I, IDOT came back and said, no, you need to change this turn, turn radius if you're going to convert to two-ways? That we should probably convert the turn radius for one-ways as well?
That's fair.
Okay. So, al- also, in this new configuration, do you think that, uh, the Fourth Street intersection is the same, less safe, or more safe?
In consideration of signalization, and I, I talked a little bit in, uh, up here and in emails about a phased, uh, signal plan, we could actually make that intersection safer, in my opinion, by separating out the left turn movements northbound onto Fourth Street.
So you could give a green left arrow to folks turning from River Drive to Fourth Street and clear out that queue before you, you let both sides come?
That's correct.
Okay, currently you have to hang out in the wind and wait to turn left, right? Okay. I think that, that's all I have for you, Brian. So I, I do appreciate you, you walking through this with me. So here's my point, we know how much this costs, okay? Now there are decisions that this council can make that can make it more expensive, okay? We can add in stoplights where there are stop signs. Um, we can decide that we need to fix the, the, uh, turning radius on River Drive. And there is a cost to that, but that cost is the same for one-way traffic as it is for two-way traffic. And it, and it currently exists. Okay, so my last, my last little comment is this. Everybody has tried to, you know, frame, and, and I like it 'cause this is the discussion we need to have about issues in Davenport. Everybody's tried to frame the conversation a certain way and I'll just tell you how I frame the conversation. We can design cities for cars or we can decide, design cities for people. And where I'm concerned, I wanna design cities for people, for pedestrians, um, for homeowners, for business owners, places where people want to be. And slower traffic and more pedestrians is good for neighborhoods, it's good for businesses. Now let me tell you, I'm very consistent about this across the entire city. Um, one of the projects I am most proud of in, in my seven years on council is putting a traffic circle at Sixth and, Sixth and Vine, okay? A, a, a dangerous intersection, uh, for people who are down there getting, uh, services, social services. Okay, that's who's down there and they were, it was very dangerous. And we went in there and we, we put in the first traffic circle in Davenport, it wasn't out on Vets, it was down on, uh, Sixth and Vine. We put that in there because it made it safe, safer for those people to cross the street and get the things that they needed. In the Seventh Ward, I've advocated for road diets on Marquette Street north of, uh, Kimberly, West Kimberly. I've advocated for a road diet on Marquette north of 53rd. Okay, those neighbors call and say, cars are racing down my streets and there are answers to slow those cars down, and I'm in favor of those. When the road diet came up in my own ward, up in the Sixth Ward on Jersey Ridge, and, uh, there was a lot of opposition to it, a road diet to slow cars down on Jersey Ridge, I advocated for it. Ultimately, we didn't do it, um, I still think we should've. Alderman Kelly and, uh, that, that crossing eh, on Jersey Ridge down the hill, there are ways that we can deal with that if we put people, uh, before cars and I'm willing, um, to do that support. But I think the biggest thing is, last year, um, we had residents in the Sixth Ward reach out and they wanted to experiment with, uh, speed bumps, okay? Something we've never done, something that's been quite controversial. And met with Alderman Jobin and Alderman Dunn and we went out there and we came up with the plan and the neighbors supported it and we implemented speed bumps and we said, we're going to evaluate doing this across the city because one of the big concerns we get is people drive too fast down my street. So I get calls and emails about 36th Street 'cause it's polarizing, just like one-ways and two-ways. Uh, and it's either, hey, I live on that street and I absolutely love it because I can play basketball in my front yard with my kids now and we don't have to get, we don't have to worry about getting run over when the ball goes into the street. Okay, then I get a call that says, you idiots, um, that is how I go to Hy-Vee and it now takes me four extra minutes to get to Hy-Vee, right? And my answer is, I would rather the family be able to play basketball in their front yard than you get to Hy-Vee four minutes faster, right? That, that, so that's where I'm coming from. But that's where the cognitive dissonance comes when you're talking about traffic. When it's my street, when it's my house, when it's my business, I want those people to slow down. I want slower speed limits, I want speed bumps, whatever it takes to slow them down. Uh, but when it comes to, I'm in my car and I wanna go to wherever I'm going, I wanna get there as fast as I, I possibly can. So, again, I, I frame it, I'm putting people in place before, before I put cars. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp, Alderman Condon.
Um, throughout the debate, the extension of this conversion to the Division Street has, has been, um, uh, thrown around from, from the very first public, uh, council work session. So it's an idea that, um, that is not new to this discussion. Uh, procedurally, um, I asked legal to draft the following language and I'm in, uh, one at the state for the public that I'm considering offering this amendment next week. Uh, the amendment would read, I move to amend the proposed ordinance to change the western boundary for the conversion of two-way streets from Marquette Street to Division Street. And this action includes using the traffic control devices and plans previously presented by staff for the extended area. I will say, might've been ideal, uh, for, for this to be introduced earlier. However, um, again, this is not new, it, it's been debated in the peripheral, uh, of all of these, uh, public meetings. Um, and, uh, a- as it's been introduced and, and it's, um, not gone away. It's simultaneously been studied by staff, it's been priced out by staff, it's been refined as we continue to look at this. Um, and, and maybe thank God, we didn't table, uh, this issue as we, uh, continued to look at different options. Um, we allowed, um, this process to move forward, so, um, simultaneously, um, the debate among my colleagues and the support for this issue has, has been a little bit circuital in its nature. Um, and, uh, and, and so, uh, again, while I can, I'll concede that ideally perhaps this would've been, uh, read in uh, to one of these public meetings sooner. Um, it, it should come as no surprise to anybody who's been following the discussion. And so, um, in order to further facilitate that discussion and allow that to come to a head, I, I decided that as one of the biggest proponents of, of the one-way conversion and as a resident of West Third Street, um, it, it made perfect sense for me, uh, to be the one to bring it out, uh, before you. Uh, because I do believe in my heart of hearts that, um, if we could afford it, the, uh, conversion from one-ways to two-ways should go all the way to Telegraph. I, I think it's the right thing for the city. I think, um, uh, for many years, revitalization of our central city neighborhoods has been one of the highest goals of our city council. And I think, uh, the downtown momentum that we have is, um, i- is the thing that we need to hitch our wagon to, uh, and allow that support, um, to grow westward. Um, and so, uh, no version of this, uh, conversion would be impervious to critique. Um, I, I will let you know that I could support multiple versions of this conversion. Uh, for me, um, it's important that we let this progress happen in whatever version, uh, that our majority body decides. After 10-plus years of debate and, and being told not yet, the downtown has, um, continued to do other holistic things that, um, help make us a thriving downtown neighborhood and we've finally reached that critical mass of, of residents and businesses and vibrancy and culture um, that, that we need to allow this to happen. Um, so, uh, procedurally, um, that, that is where I'm at and, and, and a little bit of why. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Condon, Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Alderman Jobin. I'd, you know, like to echo what a cou, a couple of people have said tonight and I'd like to say, I would prefer to see this go to Marquette. That is my, that would be my preference, I do support, uh, the conversion and my preference is Marquette. I understand, um, that, um, for whatever reason, for many reasons, that perhaps people on the west end are concerned about the possibility of an extension and I accept that concern. However, this is so important to me, um, and it is very important to me that this, this conversion go forward, that if, if I, if in the end, my only choice is because I'm a amendment to, to Division, then I will support that. Um, that is not my choice, but I am, if I am forced to make another decision, I will. And I do want, and I do want to, um, just remind people that, you know, as, you know, Davenport's not a bad city, our people who ran our city in the, back in the day, were not bad people. Um, they, uh, were doing what everybody was doing in the country. They were building car-centric cities that weren't built as car-centric cities, they were people-oriented cities. Um, uh, people found ways to unload things in, when it was two-way streets. Um, they found ways to do that, buses found ways to stop, trolley cars were there as well, as someone pointed out. So you had even more, more kinds of things on the street. You had many, many more cars, um, you know, on the street at that point. Um, and, and this, in Davenport, it, we did it at, we did it at Harrison, we did it at Brady, we did it on Third and Fourth Street, we did it on 14th and 15th Streets, all of which are, were bad choices at, at the end of the day. It were, there were compromises, um, um, to offset other things that were happening. We're being proposed to, to gut our city, uh, basically with a highway coming through it. It would've gutted the middle of our city, would've divided the west from the east entirely forever. Um, um, and that, and the, the, um, Harrison and Brady Streets were a result, that was the compromise. It's a bad compromise, we have people, uh, businesses and homeowners who live along those streets saying, please, put these back to two-ways, this, we can never thrive as, with this as one-ways. So, um, we have people on 14th and 15th Street asking the same thing. Um, those streets have become very heavily in most, uh, parts of the city, um, rental. Um, and rental is fine and there's nothing wrong with rental property. It's nice to have the stabilization of homeowners as well. That's what happens on one-way streets, that is what happens on one-way streets. So these are not good things for the city, but Davenport did this like many other cities across the country. Um, now it's time to look at that again, our city has changed, um, our downtown has changed tremendously. Uh, there are people who've come before us who have said, well, when people came downtown, they knew what it was like so they should just be used to it. Well, let me say that if with that kind of attitude, the, the parts of our cities that have been gutted, um, south of Locust over the years, if that's the way, uh, everybody felt, including me and my neighbors, uh, they would still be gutted. Uh, we just came off a wonderful home tour last weekend in my neighborhood. We had, we didn't have as many people as we would like because of the rain, we had 600 people there. Um, and the, many of the houses that were on tour would be gone today. Um, and there would be nothing built in their place, there would be empty lots for the city to likely cut. That's, that's what we would have in our neighborhood. If my neighborhood had not- not invested its dollars, uh, our own private dollars, a- a- and, and made it a better place, and then we do feel like, I will tell you in a neighborhood like that, that we can go to this city and say, hey, we want you to deal with this house, we want you to ta- to take some action here. We have invested our dollars here. There's nothing wrong, uh, I think, in uh, businesses saying the same thing. But if we hadn't had uh, people willing to take risk in these empty buildings, then we'd be still, still sitting there with a downtown that was pretty much gutted and half-gone, half-empty, uh, which was one of the solutions also, is let's, let's take down 50 buildings downtown. So, I want us to be bold. I understand people's concerns about this, I understand change is difficult, but let's not stay in the past, let's not be afraid of this, um, and let's remember that we do need to have a city where people feel welcome. It's people, not cars, it's people who drive our cities, it's people who live on our streets, it's people that bring energy and ideas and, and hope to cities, um, and, and will help bring the city back. They're very important, and let's keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Seeing none others, I will have a few comments. Um, want to talk about a little bit of perception, um, and philosophy. Um, so, one, my perception is the downtown is great, um, and I thank Kyle Carter, Downtown Davenport Partnership, Chamber of Com- or QC Chamber, for all the work that they do to keep it thriving. Um, I, I don't really get a perception from other people that oppose this, that uh, that they think the downtown's a horrible place either. So, I don't think any of the opposition comes from that, and I'm not insinuating, insinuating that. Um, you know, I think perceptively, you know, my tolerance for ambiguity is usually low, and when we got something that's going pretty well, we've got structures in place, um, that, that um, are succeeding, then, then my, my usual thought process is, hey, let them keep running and not get in the way. Um, so, I've never been super keen on making change for change's sake, um, without real strong evidence. Um, I should probably be an accountant, because I say no a lot more than, than I say yes. Um, talking about philosophy, um, early on in this process, our uh, Public Works Director, when, when asked, you know, if, if this, is this something you approve or something you recommend, and, and uh, eloquently said, this, this is just a philosophical decision for, for those of us on council, right? Um, you know, philosophically, you know, making this change, you know, I, I think we're, I think we're still trying to put a little bit of a square peg in a round hole. Reason why I say that is, um, someone's brought up about if we had to read it, if we had a blank slate and we had to redesign Third and Fourth Streets, would we do it with um, one ways? And answer would probably be no. Alderman Grip mentioned about being more pedestrian-centric versus auto-centric. Philosophically, to me, we have a downtown that can't support itself by the residents that live there, all right? You've got a lot of businesses down there, and we have approximately 2,000 people that reside down there. They can't support all the businesses down there. People have to come downtown purposefully, right? And people are coming downtown purposefully in automobiles. Along that line, Third and Fourth Street are minor arterials, that's the way they're classified. Minor arterials are designed to focus on those higher volume traffic mobility, right? We're trying to get people through two places, you know? If they're coming off of River Drive, they're going to go beyond Harrison Street to some of these businesses down, you know, close to Marquette, close to Division. So, philosophically, if we've got a street that's designed as an arterial, we should probably keep it auto-centric as much as that, you know, may, may be a deterrent for um, pedestrian-friendly events and such as that. Um, also, you know, we got to think, on arterial streets, we have very few streets that are arterial streets in the city of Davenport that have on-street parking, right? So philosophically here, you know, are we, we're, we're kind of mixing and matching what, what we want to do, and it gets a little, little muddy, right? Our arterial streets where we have on-street parking are Brady Street, Harrison, Marquette, um, you get into the Village on Eleventh Street, Mound Street, and then we got Second, Rockingham, you know, some, some of these other streets. Um, one of my other bugaboos with this, with this, and philosophically, uh, I struggle with is, is the four-way stops that are recommended, right? I think that if there's a light there now, it should stay a light, and we shouldn't have four-way stops. Um, and in the city of Davenport, on arterial streets, there are four-way stops at Jersey Ridge and Eleventh, Mound Street and Eleventh, so that's a T-intersection, you got it right there. You've got Eastern and Elm Street, there's a four-way intersection, or a four-way stop, and then Eastern and Rush Home, again, a T. So, those are our only arterial streets in Davenport that have, have all-way or four-way stops. And so, again, you know, if we start looking at putting four-way stops in place, um, you know, are we, are we kind of messing with things philosophically? Um, my bugaboos with this project, as I've mentioned before, are, I think we need to get it to Division Street. I don't like the four-way stops downtown, um, and then, um, the River Drive intersections, right? Back to the four-way stops, I don't believe that, that a four-way stop sign-controlled intersection is going to be more pedestrian safely, safer, excuse me, for pedestrians than a lighted controlled intersection. You know, we, we've pointed out that when people get behind the wheel, and me included, we get a little dumb, right? We, we're getting from point A to point B as quick as we can, and the only way we're going to reduce that risk is just reduce the amount of vehicles. And if we're still having vehicles on the road, you know, I would rather be directing people, hey, this is when you can go across the street versus standing there with multiple cars at the intersection trying to figure out, when is it my time to go? Um, lastly, as I'm circling the, circling around the uh, airport here, uh, looking at my uh, traffic controller telling me to land it, um, division street again, um, you know, I think this is something that will reduce risk. You know, I do have, I do, do oppose having two-way and one-way traffic coming head-on. When you do look at the traffic numbers, traffic is less on Third and Fourth Street as you get towards, towards Division versus Marquette, and so I think that makes sense. I don't bring these types of things up, stopway, or stoplights, uh, moving into Division to try and bump up the cost of this project in hopes of derailing it. That's not my intention at all. I'm looking at it from a safety perspective. Risk management is where I'm at there. Um, and so, those are, those are my oppositions to those. And then lastly, um, just wrapping it up here, and I'll be better next week, I promise, um, is that intersection at River Drive and Third and Fourth. Again, my tolerance for ambiguity is typically low. Um, I would prefer to have the final say-so from the DOT before, before moving forward. Um, while, yep, all signs might point to a certain direction, hey, you know, we've had, we've had decisions made that go against the grain sometimes. We might be better off spending the $1.2 million, or, you know, city's on the hook for approximately $1 million on this conversion project. Maybe we use that money to fix those intersections now, come back later, we got all our ducks in a row. So, with that, I thank you very much for rambling, and if anybody else wants to speak, seeing none, that item will move on. Move on to item number three, a resolution approving street lane or public ground closures on the list of dates and times to hold outdoor events. I'll read all of these and then ask for comment. First, St. Paul the Apostle Catholic School, back-to-school block party, 10:07 East Rush Home Street, Saturday, September 24, 2022, 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Closure, East Rush Home Street from Arlington Avenue to Cary Avenue. Please note, this is requested to be voted on later on in this agenda, and also of note, I will um, abstain from both, both the vote on suspension of the rules as well as this item due to a conflict. Um, next, Davenport Fire Antique and Restoration Society, eighth annual fire muster and lights, siren, lights and sirens in parade. Village of East Davenport, Sunday, October 2, 2022, 7:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Closures, East Eleventh Street from Mound Street to Jersey Ridge Road, Christie Street from East Eleventh Street, north to the alley. Next, Village of East Davenport Business Association, Village Hops, Village of East Davenport, Saturday, October 8, 2022, 12:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Closures, East Eleventh Street from Mound Street to Jersey Ridge Road, Christie Street from Eleventh Street, north to the alley, Jersey Ridge Road from East Eleventh Street to East 12th Street. And then last, St. Paul the Apostle Catholic School, Trunk or Treat, 10:07 East Rush Home Street, Friday, October 28, 2022, 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Closure, East Rush Home Street from Arlington Avenue to Cary Avenue. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item, on these items, excuse me? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Next, number four, motion approving noise variance requests for outdoor events on the list of dates and times. Again, I'll read all these before asking for comment. Riverfront Improvement Commission, Rolling on the River Car Show, Leclerc Park, Saturday, October 1, 2022, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Outdoor music over 50 dB. Next, Davenport Peace, Peace Family Day, Emice Park, 4500 West Locust Street, Su- Saturday, October 1, 2022, 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Outdoor music over 50 dB. Next, International Fire Museum, eighth annual fire muster and lights and sirens parade. Village of East Davenport, Sunday, October 2, 2022, 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Outdoor music band over 50 dB. And last, Downtown, Downtown Davenport Partnership, German Fest, Kaiser Slotting Square, 119 East Third Street, Friday, October 14, 2022, 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Outdoor music band over 50 dB. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that'll move on. And last, we have item number five, motion approving beer liquor license applications under section A, new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area location transfer. I'll read all of these. Um, first, German American Heritage Center, 119 East Third Street, temporary event license, German Fest at K-Square, October 14, license type, beer, wine. And next, Nally's Kitchen Incorporated, 2843 East 53rd Street, license upgrade, license type, class C liquor. And then we have all the items listed under B, the annual license renewals, which are listed for your review. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on any of these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, I would ask Alderwoman Dickman to please set the agenda.
I move that item number two remain on discussion and that all other items be placed on consent except for the item under uh, number three that will be voted on later on the adj- agenda.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That closes the public safety. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jobin and Alderwoman Dickman. The next area is Public Works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly will discuss. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a resolution approving a submission to update hazard mitigation actions and hazard scoring for Davenport and Scott County Emergency Management Agency and by State Regional Commission for the purposes of updating the 2023 Scott County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazardous Mitigation Plan. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution accepting the pavement associated with Birchwood Grove First Edition. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution accepting the pavement associated with Birchwood South First and Second Editions. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution awarding a sole-source contract for engine number two overhaul at the Water Pollution Control Plant to Altorfer Incorporated of Davenport, Iowa in the amount of $139,325. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a res- resolution authorizing the submission of an application to the United States Department of Transportation Railroad Crossing Elimination Grant Program for the assistance of the South Concord Avenue and Water Pollution Control Plant Compost Facility Overpass and Excess Road Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Chair. On this one, I would like to ask that this be kept on discussion, and um, I would like to know, I, you know, I'm, I'm for going out for the, um, let's see if we can get the grant. I think that's important. But I also want to make sure that it will come back before council so that um, when it's actually going into design, we have an idea, a very good idea, going back to the lack of ambiguity, I agree with you, uh, what the cost will be when it gets down to it. So, I'd like to keep this on agenda, and I'll talk about it a little bit more next week.
Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution authorizing the submission of a creative place-making grant application to the Destination Iowa Program through the Iowa Economic Development Authority. And before I ask for any comment from the public, I believe our city administrator would like to give us a little update.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn, and Clay's gonna help tag-team in case my voice disappears at some point in this, uh, and he has been leading um, the preparation of the grant application. So, we had promised at the previous Tuesday briefing, uh, that we would have a rendering for you tonight. We wanted to make sure we had good imagery for the grant submission. Crappy, can you blow it up a little bit? Just a little bit. Um, so, as the councils aware, we asked Sasaki to do a little add-on work to the previous contract. No, you ruined the thunder, Crappy. It's fine, we'll make it work. Um, so, I'll start with a kudos to Clay and Courtney and the whole team that's been working on this, uh, with our partners, Dave Harrell and the Visit Quad Cities crew. Um, and as we discussed, the Figgy component, Michelle is here, um, and has been a great partner as well. But Sasaki did a ton of work, and you can see where uh, the Sky Bridge as a landmark is, and as well as Quinlan Court. Uh, so, the project really starts on the northern side, um, and it's a little hard to see, and I think you have bigger versions in front of you. Um, but there's a kind of a grand staircase coming from Quinlan Court up, but also a grand lawn coming up from the Dillon Fountain. Uh, so, lots of great geometry there to take advantage of the Sky Bridge. Um, just to the left of the Sky Bridge, you kind of see a, a parallel overpass. That is the overpass that goes over the CP rail, and it's 24 feet tall, I'm guessing, perfect. Um, but it's also really cool, it's got a landing spot, um, there's lots of observation areas, and then you can see it cuts across kind of perpendicular uh, into the destination zone, which you can't see it when you're looking straight down at it, um, but will be uh, very vertically integrated, uh, so you'll see a lot of um, really great articulation there. And then I'm actually gonna have you skip ahead, because it's easier to see than the pretty one. Um, so, at night, it's beautiful. Uh, one thing Director Durham had said when she was here is, light is art, and we know the Sky Bridge is an important piece of this, but you can see much better in this version. There's a ribbon that flows through it, um, and that is an articulated walkway, um, which most importantly provides a separation between the train tracks and the highly, um, where we expect the most congregation of um, park participants, um, and visitors to the area, and provides that really safe barrier uh, between the train area and that. And then, if you look kind of south of Brady, which is, you can almost see an Eiffel Tower in there, a little bit, um, you'll see a ribbon, it's got nodes in it. Um, that is a, well, the whole thing is built for 365 days, um, but one of the things we heard from our residents is a real interest in making sure this was equally inviting during the winter. Um, and so that's a skating rink of sorts, or a, a trail, um, that can be used in equally fun ways in the summer. Um, so to make sure that it can be activated year-round, um, that it is both intense and accessible in its active zones, but also has great spots for families as well. Um, did I miss anything? All right, so Clay's gonna talk a little bit more about uh, the application itself and the process.
Sure. Clay, my, Public Works. Uh, so, Corey walked through the, the project um, very well. So, in terms of process, so, on September 30th is the deadline uh, for the grant submission, so that's more, more than likely that day, or the previous day is when staff's gonna submit the project. We're currently working through um, all of the supporting documentation that goes along with it. I also would like to say a big thank you to Dave Harrell, um, with Visit Quad City, and Michelle, um, with the Figgy Art Museum, they've been fantastic partners throughout this whole process. Uh, I do want to add a little bit, um, one of the things we, that is important for us, that we think that these three projects, because um, one thing that um, you'll see on there is the Sky Bridge lit up. Um, currently, we have some antiquated uh, lighting technology, um, within the current structure. What we want to do is update that, so we can be able to then mimic some of the things that um, the Figgy Art Museum is trying to do. So, once again, you see three projects that are architecture-based, they're um, LED lighting-based, um, people create that, um, that unique, um, kind of unique place that is unlike anywhere within our region. Uh, so, once again, uh, we're looking to have that. Uh, I know another thing, um, that I want to mention that wasn't originally in there is, part of this project is quiet zones. So, one of the key um, uh, parts of having a successful uh, riverfront, now with the proposed merger, is ensuring that we have quiet zones throughout the whole length of the, the riverfront. So, that's from not just the three crossings that you see in front of you, it's from Mount, I mean, it's I mean, excuse me, it's from Mound Street in the east to Marquette in the west. That's an important component. And so that's built into this application, just like you see the pedestrian bridge that's built into there as too. So we're also kind of like the item that was just before you about the FRA for the overpass near the Water Pollution Control Plant. You know, we are moving forward with some of those mitigation efforts and building in as part of this project.
So the one thing I would add to that, and it really speaks to Alderwoman Lee's previous question of, so when does this come back? The action before you is submitting the grant. We don't know necessarily the state's timeline to turn that around, but there will be many more steps in this process. And so Sasaki will continue to work on our original contract for Main Street Landing, just as it was outlaid, while we work through the grant process with the state of Iowa as well as the CP Kansas City merger. So there will be lots of check-in points as we continue to march this project forward, with the next one really being when we hear back from the state of Iowa whether or not we're successful in this project.
Okay. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item?
Mayor and council, I'm Kathy Wine, Executive Director of River Action. I'm a resident of Davenport. And I thought it would be a good time during this Destination Iowa, Destination Iowa discussion to give you an update on First Bridge, one of those projects that also create a sense of place and tell you how you can help. River Action values public-private partnerships. The big projects are always done this way. The successful projects are always done this way. Through the years, these have been significant, the lighting of the Centennial Bridge and the continuing, continual maintenance of it to this day, the negotiation River Action had with US EPA on the agreement to buy 70 acres of wetland at Nahat Marsh and the Gun Club to make an education program and an education building there, as well as negotiate the $2 million super fund cleanup and the deeding of it all to the city of Davenport. The building of the Channel Cat Water Taxi and docks in four cities, which led to our running it for three and a half years and turning it over to MetroLink debt-free. Most recently, it was our moving the Sunday and the Park Statues to Lower Lindsey Park, working with the Davenport Parks Department to create platforms. These have been partnerships that work. In none of these projects has DAP River Action been the beneficiary of any of the funds. They've always gone to the public use. And it isn't with First Bridge either. Our First Bridge Resolution has deadlines for both River Action and the city. It also, and I brought some tonight and I'll hand to Bryant for distribution when he wishes to do that. It also states the city of Davenport encourages and supports River Action's pursuit of grants and private fundraising efforts. To date, we have raised $700,000, all in private funding. But state and federal grants are different. We applied twice to Congresswoman Miller Meeks for a community grant. Twice, she interviewed us, liked the, liking the culture, history, and safety aspects of the bridge, but informed she wanted the application to come from the city. The city passed on this $2 million opportunity two times. We applied for rec trail grants from both the Iowa and federal DOT three times for a total of $2 million in funding. But our request for a CIP budget for River Heritage Park mound or written confirmations that the city will do what it says it will do in the resolution, something the administrator asked us to do, was declined. A special COVID rec trail grant required the city to apply, but the city opted not to participate as a co-applicant. These grants total in all 4.5 million. And should we, should we have received them? And if we'd received only half of them?
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for a point, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna ask for a point of order.
Yes. Could you stick to the agenda item, please?
I'm sorry?
Does this pertain to the agenda item?
It does in that it's, I think, the option of having First Bridge a part of the Destination Iowa grant. It does.
Okay.
Okay. And so, and I wanted to give you an update on the, on the First Bridge project. I haven't been able to do that for a while. We are all helped by another partner in the First Bridge project, the Davenport Y. They recognize how Y members will use it and their children in day camps can access it and will build at their expense the trail from the north into the bridge through the Y property to Federal Street, to Farnham Street, and to Sixth, a part of the city bike route, and to the Cork Hill neighborhood. To aid in fundraising, we've completed a professional feasibility study and appealed to the Quad City Contributors Council for approval. We've received that from both and with the caveat, Y, since the city is the beneficiary, it is not more invested. So now, following the recent train car accident at River Heritage Park, when the Viking cruise ship was being welcomed, it should be. The need is greater than ever for a bridge to cross the busy US 67 and the active CP rail line, wide enough for an ambulance when the train blocks the entrance. It will serve as the only such bridge between 17th Street and Bettendorf and the Hollow Street Tunnel in southwest Davenport. Now is the time.
Mr. Chair.
Wrap it up, please.
Five minutes is up.
Yeah, your time's up. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone from council? Oh, we got another one. Go ahead, please.
Michael Giedt, Six Ward. I'm not real familiar with this, so I will tell you right at the start, but if we have a bridge, existing bridge, do we really need another, is that another bridge that's gonna be over the railroad tracks, but maybe over the roadway too? No, it's not gonna go over the roadway. But do we need another one right next to it? And then also, she mentioned the one that they're, they'd like to have a bridge up by Federal Street. I, you know, I recently seen that in the paper. You know, how many more bridges do we need? You know, and if this one gets one, well, then is the other one gonna want one? You know, the next walkover is like, well, you have one for your business, so I need one for my business. And why can't we utilize the existing skybridge? Either put more elevators in or something or other? And are people going to use these bridges or are they gonna still cross the tracks? I mean, you know, because it's, it takes, you know, more time to go up and over and down. So, and anyway, it's just, I guess I don't understand why we have a bridge next to the other bridge, so, but, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Council?
Well, they, thank you. Molly Newell. I'm in two different wards. I think it's a fantastic plan. I love it. I question whether it can be built for 6 million. And I also question how this is going to work with the railroad with the tripling of the traffic. The bridges will help, but flashing back to two points made earlier, specifically the parks and the, you know, cordoning off streets and having festivals with a limit of 50 decibels, I think that's a good number. But if you've thought about what this means, everybody's agreeing that 50 decibels is plenty. And what we have on the train tracks is up to like 118 without the whistles. So your quiet zone limitation is gonna fall on deaf ears, literally. It's not gonna help. It's a beautiful park. People will use it even if they're threatened by the trains three times as much as they are now. I also question how these are all tied in with these other grants for, for the $2 million, which isn't enough, by the way, for the Concord Street Bridge, and how all these things dovetail together. I realize there's a sequence of events that has to happen for grants. Always will be. It's difficult. Private-public partnerships are what we're talking about. But with the noise level going up, this might be the last one. Because if you have to satisfy the NEPA requirements to build something with a private-public partnership that uses federal money, you're gonna have to meet NEPA requirements, which say over 85 decibels is what they call, it's not gonna get your FONZI, finding of no significant impact. You're gonna have a significant impact on the people, all ages, environmental justice to whoever wants to enjoy the parks. It's gonna be a problem. And I know there was a comment made earlier tonight that the people who did the oneways weren't, aren't around anymore and they didn't know what they were doing. I'm thinking in five years, you guys won't be around anymore. And think about what you're doing by putting a park next to a train track, which is gonna triple its traffic at more than twice the decibels. And you know it's on a logarithmic scale, right? It's not just double the decibels to go from 50 to 100. It's on a logarithmic scale. So I'm saying I see conflict and trouble ahead. The design's beautiful. I'd be at a quandary if I was in your seat. I hope that you make some good decisions going forward and I would urge you to rescind your previous vote on accepting this money from the railroad. That's what I would encourage you to do. Stand tall and let's get them to do a better job. Thank you.
Thank you. Just, just to clear this up, this is a, instead of a $6 million project, all in, I believe it's 24 million. So, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone from the council? Alderman Gripp?
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. So, and I will, I do want to talk about the funding because I think that, that's extremely important to understand the funding mechanism for this. So first off, I want to say the design is incredible. So I've been going to Main Street Landing meetings literally since I was in high school, 22 years ago. That's not, that's not hyperbole. I've gone to every one since I was in high school. This is the best one that I've seen. My mic is on.
You're, you're fine, sir. Just keep going.
I'll, I'll speak up. All right. So this is the best iteration of this plan that I've seen in 20 years. And one of the questions that Sasaki asked was what makes this different than the other plans that the city of Davenport has had? And it comes down to two things. The first is, we haven't had a plan that, that stirs the spirit of investors enough to get it done, right? I, I think we need to be honest about that. We've, we've shopped it to folks who are gonna fund it, but it hasn't happened. But we also haven't had an appetite as a city to spend, as Alderman Dunn said, $20 million on a park, right? We haven't had that appetite because our CIP dollars, they go to roads and sewers. That's where they go in Davenport. And we haven't had the appetite to do this using those dollars. And I understand that and I've been a part of those decisions to continue to invest almost all of our CIP dollars in roads and sewers. So what gets us done is the, is the funding mechanism. So to be clear, this project gets done with $0 from Davenport's capital budget. $0. We get the just over 6 million from the ARPA funds that we designated for the Destination Play Area. And then we use the quiet zone money and that, that we could receive from the railroad if the merger goes through to, to install the quiet zones and the pedestrian ramps as a part of the agreement. And then you take that money and you, you do an application to the state of Iowa for destination dollars and they match all of those dollars, dollar for, or not dollar for dollar. You pay 60, it's a 40% discount. They give us $8 million, okay? So it comes up to $20 million, $0 out of the city of Davenport's capital budget. Pretty, pretty good deal. Now, there is the, there is the additional 4 million that is on this project that goes to the FIGGIE. Same deal. The state of Iowa will pay 40% of that and the FIGGIE will fundraise 60% of that, which they have done. And they're very, they're very, they've done it. So this is a good deal. Once again, we get, we get this thing that we've been talking about for 25 years, if not more, done using zero capital dollars. The other things are, this is in line with our current HR Green Comprehensive Flood Plan that we approved, okay? This is flood resilient. HR Green, who we hired for that, is also the sub on, on this and will be making sure that this project meets the requirements of our comprehensive flood plan. And then it, it addresses, it uses design to address the issues with, with the railroad. And so there are access issues. The reason why that pedestrian bridge is there is that, that was part of the agreement that, that we made if the merger goes through with, with the railroad, that we would get $10 million and we would be able to strategically place a couple of two pedestrian bridges and this would be one of them. We also said within that agreement, if the merger happens, we would install quiet zones throughout the entire city of Davenport. And so it, it's kind of hard from far away, but they have done a really nice job of separating the space from the, from the railroad using design. So I, I'm, I'm very excited about this. I'm, I'm hopeful that the, the state of Iowa is going to be as excited about this, this project as I am. And I'm hoping that they'll, they'll fund this great destination project on Davenport Riverfront. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much. Thank you, city administrator, for clarifying that this also will be coming back. Saves me having to ask that. Thank you. But I do have some questions for staff. Could you talk a little bit? We've talked about the Maintenance Operation Flood Resistant, Flood Recovery Fund that would not come out of CIP or Parks, certainly Parks budget. Could you tell us a little bit more about that?
Sure. So I know one of the things from previous conversations with the council is they're looking that if we, you know, are successful in this application and it's built to kind of what you see here, that we can maintain this over time. That was a big, huge ask for the council in terms for staff to try and figure that out. I would say, I know our Parks Director and our CFO and the city administrator are currently working together to see what that looks like. You will probably see that come back to you if we, if this grant is successful and if design moves forward. We don't want to unnecessarily plan for something just in case it doesn't happen. But this is a big component for us is to ensure that we build something within our operating budget that can sustain this over time, whether that be events, normal, you know, day-to-day operations, or in the case of a flood, what happens. In terms of design, it's Alderman Gripp's point, this is meant to be flood resilient. Some, some of these assets will be elevated from where they're currently at, so most floods that we receive won't touch them and won't get them dirty. But for the most part, they're all gonna be built in order to be sustainable. So in case we do receive our floods, which tend to happen from time to time, that we can sanitize them and wash them off and then get right back to our citizens enjoying the space.
I, I just want to make sure that there's that independent fund that is sustainable and long-lasting, so that we don't put in something beautiful and then it just starts getting dingy because we can't afford to take care of it. Thank you very much. Another thing that I understood from the original Sasaki contract was that we were going to get three concepts, three different approaches for down here. I'm, I'm not saying this isn't lovely, but I understand from the contract that we were going to get three different directions, different types, that could then go out for public involvement. Are we still going to get that or is this it?
So we still plan to seek public involvement during, as part of this. I would say in terms of three separate, different types of concepts, that contract was made and approved before this application was available. So that has changed a little bit, but that's when going after this funding, you, you have to be able to provide something to the state to look like that you're ready to go. So there will be some alterations if this grant is successful to that contract and we would bring that before you for what that altered contract would look like with Sasaki.
Alderwoman Lee, I would add on to that. I would look at this as about a 40,000-foot view.
This one, yeah.
There are lots of fixtures and amenities and all of that work that isn't done yet. And so I think when you think of the concept of customization and, and choice and meeting that demand, there's, there's tons of opportunities left to, for citizen input.
And, and I just want to make sure that we get what we pay for in that contract because it's a, what, $275,000 contract for Sasaki and HR Green? And if part of that is several different concepts and then public involvement where they get to choose what they want for down here, I think that needs to be incorporated. And the third one I've got is, one of the things we focused on with Main Street Landing is that it is in. one of the things we focused on with Main Street Landing is that it is in, um, I think two low-income census tracts. Two, one? One? Okay, one. That's why I said I think. Thank you. So one, okay. So I also want to make sure that we do appropriate outreach to those folks because I, I know that different demographics use parks differently. And I want to make sure that we are approaching all the demographics, including the low-income demographics and meeting their needs with the designs that come up. You know, I, I go past Harrington Park and it's a big, beautiful park and the, the folks there always use the shelter and the basketball court. That's what's used there. There's a big playground and everything, but I never see anyone except there. And other people would use, probably use that park differently. So I think that needs to be approached with this as well as part of the Sasaki contract to make sure we're reaching out to the low-income people that we talked about with that census group that kind of strengthen this whole, uh, contract and application. So we need to find ways to do that that isn't show up at a big meeting. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Cornet.
Thank you. My question is, uh, if the railroad money goes away, what happens to this project?
So like any project, if costs increase too high or funding mechanisms change, we would scale it down. So if we don't get the state of Iowa grant, if CP merger doesn't go through, then you scale it back down to the 6 million. And, and so would you get that whole picture? No, you wouldn't. Uh, but there would be elements of it you would.
Okay. It looks like these, this, uh, park is terraced. Is that, uh, to help with flooding and stuff?
Uh, it will be terraced. There will be landforms, um, all around it, but there will be, um, landscape forms, not necessarily flood protection. So the city's flood resiliency plan calls for flood protection, uh, in phase two to be north of the railroad tracks. And that is specifically, um, for when trains, um, do come, whether they're in their existing form now or if the proposed merger goes through and they're tripled, that's, the city has control over the various intersections that it will need to put, um, protection measures against. So there's a reason, um, our flood resiliency plan is north of the railroad tracks, but there will be kind of elevated berms throughout this, um, throughout the project.
All right, thank you, sir. Alderman Condon.
Um, Ms. Kathy Wine with the River Action. I know you didn't come here for praise, but I remember at some point I mentioned to, to you or someone in your organization that I didn't really understand the appeal of Ride the River because you can ride your bike on the river any day. And then it was explained to me, oh, no, no. When Ride the River first started, we literally had to put cones on the highway so people could ride the river. And I had just taken for granted the fact that we could do that any day of the week. And so, um, in some respects, look how far we've come. I, I regret that, um, our stars not, might not be aligning at the moment on, on, on this particular grant, but, um, I'm your biggest fan and, and I hope, um, that you're a big fan of, of this investment in the river in addition to, um, your aspirations for First Bridge, which, which I'm a big fan of. I have to be careful to not, um, I, I, I don't want anyone to perceive it as an attack. We all have different roles in the council and, and, and so I value people's, uh, careful lines of questions. But, um, I always tried to pull the collective narrative from our council back to one of enthusiasm because, um, a lot of good questions can sometimes, uh, come across as, um, this being a, a, a bad idea. But what I would really love the, um, the headline to be out of this is what a fantastic opportunity for, uh, Davenport to realize a generational goal at, at a, at a price that's not going to, um, hinder our, our future budgets. That, that's really incredible. What Alderman Gripp said is true. 20 years or more, uh, at, at the, at the planning session, it was my kids designing the park that 20 years ago was what made me want to come back to Davenport. So, um, you know, time is of the essence. We're, we're all growing a little gray. And, uh, you know, it, some of this, i- i- if it doesn't smack as, uh, the best, the best thing happening for you, uh, please appreciate that it might be generational. You can look at, um, the one-way debate and, and this debate to some extent. And, and it reminds me of a concert where, um, there's no seats and there's warm beer and your ears are ringing and you're smashed by sweaty people. And, and, and the younger person looks at you goes, I know, isn't it great? It's okay. The, there, there's so many things that we pin our hopes to, to appeal to the younger generation. And, and, and it's okay if, um, you, if the appeal doesn't directly correlate to your, to your sensibilities. So is, I was, I was happy with the way that I put it the other week and I can't actually remember it. But in life and love, i- i- in business, so many times, um, what people say is, uh, you know, the biggest thing is when you're presented with opportunity, the most important thing is to have the courage to take it. And, and I think that's where we're at right now. The, the city of Davenport has a tremendous opportunity. There's going to be a lot of great questions, um, that are going to put before us to make sure that we do this responsibility, uh, responsibly. Uh, but the most important thing is that we take this great opportunity and, and that, and that we have a collective narrative of, of tremendous enthusiasm for, for what is going to be a park that hopefully, uh, stakes, uh, a, a flag in the ground and says, you know, this city's going to remain relevant. It's going to appeal to future generations and it's reinvesting in its, uh, central city. So, um, um, I, I, I look forward to, um, uh, the opportunity to be a, a part of this progress.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Yeah, it's exciting to see this concept and I know we're a long way off. Uh, I mean, so excited about this and, and to hear to Alderman Condon's point, some of us are really a lot grayer than others. And I think I've said before, I was in my 50s when I first went, the, my first meeting about this and I'm 72. So I've already said that before. So, um, in any case, I, I, uh, this is, I know that we've been working a long time and many people around the city have come to meetings and they've talked about, how do we bring our riverfront? And, you know, the discussion's been going on since there was some discussion on, even before the casino was moving. But when they wanted to build a, they wanted to build a building there. And that's kind of what started it. And so just remembering everything as a resident that's happened, uh, since I've been here in, in 1997, it's exciting to see something come together. And I know this may change and I know, uh, that we will, uh, it'll be even more exciting. I, um, you know, our, our children right now are, um, and I know this is more than just a children's play area, but our children right now certainly, um, I see, um, them playing at our sprinkler, um, park. They play at our skate park, um, neither of which I would do. And, and, but it's pretty fun for my husband and I to go down and see kids doing things that I wouldn't have done in when I was their age, I don't think. In any case, uh, so, so I know they will find their way. Uh, and I am reminded this weekend, um, on Facebook, there were some friend, uh, I'm friends with a, a family with young children, not young children, but teenagers. And they had their pretty little outfits on and they didn't go to one of our wonderful big box stores in the north part of the city to have their photos made. They didn't go to one of our wonderful strip malls. They didn't go to one of our wonderful 1970s neighborhoods, uh, to have their photos made. They went downtown. They parked themselves in front of the river. They parked themselves in front of the Figgy. They parked themselves in front of a grungy building, um, but for the contrast. So these are all the things that are part of our riverfront area, whether it's downtown or not, but that's where they were. I cannot imagine the graduation and birthday and everything, wedding photos we're going to have coming out of this area. And I think it's very exciting. I think it's a place people will want to be. They, they will want to capture memories in. That's my hope for it and I'm very excited that we're enthused about the fact that we can take other people's money and, um, make this go. So very excited. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Now, I know the mayor wants to speak less, so I'm going to speak. You know, this, this project for me is exciting because I've been on the council a long time and, you know, I've never been a big advocate for the, for a big park downtown because it was always going to cost big money. We're always, and we're always fighting. Every year at Budget Times, Streets, what are we going to fix? We had to do this. And Alderman Gripp, every year to his credit, has said, hey, we got to put money into Main Street Landing. And we are, we've argued of how much to spend, you know, and it's like, no, not this year, bud. Not this year. But what people don't realize is by using this ARPA money, we actually freed up a million dollars in our budget to use on other things, right? So now we're leveraging $6 million of, of money that's really, it's not ours. We're going to get the railroad money, which is money that's, you know, it's ours, but it's not, you know, it's not costing us anything. And then you're going to add on top of that, taking this out and getting a grant to finish this project. Right? This project would never get done. And I, and quite honestly, it's one I would probably never support only for the lack of, you know, because it would be taking street, money from streets, sewers, everything else. This is free. This is going to be one project that's not going to cost the taxpayers a dime. We have maintenance built in it. We've got the quiet zones. We're going to do all that stuff. I, I don't know how you say no. So with that, I'll let you finish off, Mayor.
Well, it's certainly hard for me to follow, uh, that, but I'll add a couple of thoughts. So first I want to thank, uh, the folks that helped with this, um, are certainly our staff, Sasaki, David, Visit, anybody who is involved. But I want to say if they're listening, because everybody listens to our meetings, right? The state of Iowa and Ms. Director Durham, who took the time out of her busy schedule to come here and actually look at what we're thinking about. Heard that Davenport's trying to do something, interested enough, uh, to see what that is and then give us some feedback. That, that's a pretty big deal. And then for our staff in Sasaki to come and put something like this together. So thank you to all those folks and it's flood resilient. I hear a lot of conversations about a lot of things, but you know, we can, you know, do big, great, wild things. That, that's one right there. People around here have talked about Davenport's Iowa's front porch. Well, now we got a front porch that's actually going to be something there, right? That shines. And then with the Figgy doing, if you haven't seen what that's going to look like, that's pretty awesome. So Sasaki, one of the premier companies, uh, for design. Thank you for what you're doing, this application. I don't need to, I'm going to say it again because it's so important. Two sets of monies to get another set of monies to do all the things we've been talking about. And none of it's ours. I don't know how anyone, uh, could say no to this. This, uh, now, again, this is an application. We'll see what the state says, but I just want to thank everybody involved for putting something together, quite frankly, in a pretty short turnaround. For the state to put up some money to say, hey, send me something. We can see what we can do to make Iowa a destination and specifically places in Iowa and hopefully Davenport is one of those. That's a big deal. And I agree with many of the colleagues here. Some of you are not to the level of age that I am. And some of us haven't been on the council for a real long time. But I had my new grandson come here today and surprise me in City Hall on, um, a question that someone asked me that's related to me says, I hear you're putting something down there and it's going to be really cool. How do you hear that? Everybody's talking about what Davenport's doing. Now, to be full disclosure, they're related to me. So, um, that's cool. But then to come here and sit in this room and see that and hear this and we're not, and we're leveraging out of the money and we're working with the state, and, and Sasaki and the staff to make the front porch concept of Iowa a reality. I just want to thank everybody and I hope everybody on this dais here supports the application because as many people said, there's a lot of work to be done yet and a lot of particulars that need to be done and a lot of, probably quite frankly, some adjustments to be done. But that's how we do business. But, um, at least initially to, for the state of Iowa, if you're listening, we've done our best. We've had a lot of partners help us. We thank you for the consideration that you're giving Davenport by coming here and future when this comes to you very shortly. And anything, and I'll just offer, if you're listening, anything I or anybody else can do to, to explain, to enhance, to help with, uh, any questions or discussions when you're considering Davenport. I'm all ears and I'm all assistant and I think everybody else would be too. So thank you to everyone. Thank you for allowing me to talk, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Your Honor. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, this item will move on. Let's see, where were we? All, number seven. Number seven, motion approving an agreement for the engineering service for the Hall Street Lift Station improvements with Ben Stur Kim in the amount of not to exceed $82,500. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is motion ratifying change order number seven with Tricon General Construction of Dubuque, Iowa in the amount of $13,669.20 for the Modern Woman Park Flood Wall Extension and Workout Room Edition Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? This item will move on. And Alderman Kelly, would you set the agenda for us, please? Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Ortiz.
Thank you, Your Honor, uh, Chair. And my apologies, Corey or Director Merritt. I guess my, we, we've done a lot of great things down at the ballpark before my time and now. The only thing I'm really concerned with is that number seven. Is there like, and, and you could do an email. I don't put anybody on the spot. Are these, uh, many, many great improvements to downtown? We have voted number one minor league ballpark in the, in the country. I- is there a, you know, and, and it's just the number of change orders on this. Is there an ending in sight on that? And that could be emailed to me or something? And I should have asked it yesterday, my apologies.
We'll get to that update.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Alderman Ortiz. That's a fantastic question. Alderman Kelly, would you set the agenda for us, please?
Be happy to. I would like to move all items except for five and six. Keep those two on discussion and the rest to consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And the agenda is set and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly. The next area is finance. Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet will discuss. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have eight items on finance this evening. Item number one is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the necessary documents to grant an underground electrical easement to Mid-American Energy Company across city-owned parcels P 1315B04, P 1315B03, and P 1315B02, with said easement being the west 10 feet of each parcel. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number one? Counsel? The item will move on. Item number two is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the city of Davenport and Scott County, Iowa regarding the funding of specified joint projects. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number two? Counsel? Item number two will move on. Number three is a resolution approving the purchase of a Wheeler P 385C asphalt paver from Wheeler Incorporated through Altorfer Cat of Davenport, Iowa in the amount of $295,350 using Sourcewell Contract Number 060122-WLR. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number three? Counsel? That'll move on. Item number four is a resolution approving the purchase of two 2023 Ford F 450 trucks equipped with utility beds from Strever's Ford of Waki, Iowa in the amount of $136,866 using State of Iowa Department of Administrative Services Contract Number 23033. Anyone from the public wishing to address item number four? Counsel? Item number five is a resolution awarding a contract for the purchase of 13 heart monitor defibrillators, devices to Zoll Medical Corporation of Kelm's Ford, Massachusetts in the amount of $344,834.88. Anyone from the public wishing to address item number five? Counsel? Item number six is a resolution awarding a contract for the sole source purchase of 11 cardio pulmonary resuscitation or CPR devices to Physio Control of Redmond, Washington in the amount of $149,536.89. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number six? Counsel? And item number seven is a resolution awarding a sole source contract for the Vanderweer Conservatory Greenhouse Roof Repair Project to Carlin Horticultural Supplies of Milwaukee, Wisconsin in the amount of $178,956.29. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number seven? Counsel? I've had a lot of questions about the bags on the roof, so this'll, I think, take care of the bags on the roof. All right. Item number eight, uh, our final item, is a motion awarding the contract for the Goose Creek Item number eight, our final item, is a motion awarding the contract for the Goose Creek Restroom Installation Project to WRS Construction, Inc. of Davenport, Iowa and the amount of Anyone from the public wishing to address item number eight? And counsel? Below on our agenda, we do have our purchases from $10,000 to $50,000. We don't read each of those out loud, but they're listed there for your information. Alderman Cornet, would you please set our finance agenda?
I moved it all items be placed on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That concludes finance, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet. The next area is other ordinances, resolution motions. We have one, but first we must suspend the rules. So, is there a motion for suspension of the rule? There's a motion and a second, so, Mr. Crump, please call the roll for suspension of the rules.
Gripp? Yes. Dunn? Yes. Ortiz?
Yes.
McGinnis?
No.
Cornet?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Lee?
No.
Jovjin?
I abstained due to a conflict.
Ann Dickman?
Yes.
So, seven yeses, two nos, and one abstention, Your Honor?
Okay, we got seven yeses? I'm, Roger that. Okay, thank you. So, the rules are suspended because there was one abstention. All right, so the rules are suspended, so we'll go to the resolution approving the following street closure on the listed date and time to hold an event. St. Paul the Apostle Catholic Church Back to School Block Party, 1007 East Rushmore Street, Saturday, September 24th, 2022, 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. The closure is East Rushmore Street from Arlington Avenue to Cary Avenue. Is there any public with comment? Seeing none, we'll let Alderman move the resolution. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Brian, please call the roll for the resolution approval. I'm sorry, are you wanting to talk? Alderwoman McGinnis.
I'll be very brief. I have nothing against this request, but I have now taken the stance that I am saying no to people and pushing back in Third Ward. I have, I've heard loud and clear from counsel that there's too much of this, so I don't need to be a meaty, but that's the basis for my vote. So, I will be doing more of that going forward and I am doing it. I want you guys to know that. So, I'm taking the burn, all right? So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Jovjin.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, we had a discussion about an event not too long ago, applying for a liquor license late and, you know, I've made some of the comments about, hey, you know, we got to stop this as well. So, I agree wholeheartedly. I'm abstaining. This is a neighbor that is the head of this, you know, president of this organization, has to put it on, so that's kind of my conflict here. It'll go through its merits. Yep, it's a pretty benign thing. They did do the right thing by getting another one of their events coming up in the near future on the agenda appropriately. So, hopefully this is nothing that will repeat itself.
Thank you, Alderman Jovjin. Alderwoman Lee.
And I was saying with McGinnis, from the very first when I got on council, I've wanted people to, you know, pay attention and get stuff on the agenda on time. So, I vote no, you know, and I'll vote yes on the project.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Anyone else? Okay. Brian, please call the roll on the resolution.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Cornet?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Dunn? Yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Jovjin?
Abstained due to conflict, please.
Condon?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
And Gripp? Yes. So, nine yeses and one abstention, Your Honor?
Very good. Resolution is adopted. Next item, is there any public with business? So, again, I'll just say this because the last couple of times, people have been coming to me after council, last few meetings. So, public with business, this is the time, if you'd like to address the council on any item other than what's on the agenda, please come to your podium. Please give your name, order, address. You'll have five minutes. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Terry Bush. I live on North Harwood Avenue in the Third Ward. I'm a retired bus driver for the city of Davenport. I drove a bus for 15 years and I still, I'm hearing a lot of bad things about the bus system. You know, as I drove this bus around this town all these years, I got to meet people, passengers, and I got to know them. And there's people in this town, it may come as a shock to some of you guys, but there's people in this town, their absolute life depends on the bus. They got to take the bus. When they want to go to a time point and catch a bus and it's supposed to be there at 1:00, they go there to catch the bus, maybe go to work, the bus is already gone. It's five minutes down the road. Okay, and then they got people that, you know, they really, our problem is they've lately, they've been shutting bus routes down. Ain't got enough drivers a day, we just shut two routes down. Well, if you happen to be a person that needs that route, sorry, sorry about that. Maybe you don't get to work, maybe you get fired because you didn't get to work. So, I mean, our problem with this bus system is we don't have enough drivers. And let me tell you, I did part-time driving for five and a half years and part-time driving is a lousy job. Doesn't pay that much, doesn't have any benefits, lousy hours, okay? Full-time drivers, great job. Good pay, good benefits, especially health insurance. So, people want to be, I've stayed five and a half years part-time to get a full-time job so I could get health insurance, okay? But now, what we got going on now is we hire these part-time drivers and they come in there and they get a couple, three weeks of training and they get their CDL and they leave. We have a constant training program going on. We have a revolving door. Training is expensive. You know, you got to pay the person that's getting trained, you got to pay, take the trainer off his route. And then you got to get somebody to do his route and it's usually a time and a half. So, to train somebody, you're paying three and a half times. The solution is to make all these drivers full-time. Then you'll have drivers that you won't have to shut down routes, you won't have to leave people standing on the street corner in Davenport. Now, the thing is, get these full-time drivers, you know, they're not going to quit. These part-time drivers now, they just leave, you know? There's plenty of part-time jobs right now. You're not losing nothing, quitting Davenport City Bus part-time. You got your CDL and you go find something else. Okay, so, get this part-time job, you're going to get, be able to attract quality candidates and you're going to be able to train them and you're going to be able to keep them. And they're going to take care of that job because it's a good job. Okay, and you know, I know what I'm saying. So, we got to stop this revolving door and we got to realize how important it is. A small, it's a small segment of the population, but people I personally know that are being left, you know, there's nothing like standing on a street corner 10 below zero and their bus is not coming. And we don't have any way to tell them that it's not coming. You know, so anyway, all I'm saying is, I would really like to see the council take an interest in this bus system because it's needed, it's needed. So, that's all I got to say. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Michael Ross, Second Ward, want to speak to the council. There was an incident at Monroe School at about 4:30 Monday. About 50-plus kids, not one of them was arrested as far as I recall. Lasted about two and a half hours. Blocking traffic. You had probably half or three-quarters of the police force down there blocking two and three streets. I think the city should look at body cam footage, why the aggressors were not arrested and disciplinary action taken. We have to stop this, the juvenile crime. We have to, guys. Two and a half hours this went on in our city. That's our taxpayer dollars. I'm willing to speak to Blabel. I've already sent him a message. Something needs to be done. Whoever is telling the officers not to arrest needs to look for a new job. I don't know who it is, but that was uncalled for. I personally witnessed a young teenage kid punch a female. Even gave the description to the cop and asked, "Did you arrest him?" "No, but we know who he is." These kids go to Monroe and Smart. Also talked to two other officers. They're tired of the juvenile crime. They're not, they're not coming to you guys or their superiors. They're tired of it, too. Come January 1st of 2023, Davenport, I think, is going to have their hands full with the new law, the Safety Act that Illinois just passed. But I would personally like the council to start looking at body cam footage of Monday and stuff needs to happen. Suspensions? Because I witnessed four cops try to hold a female and then she broke loose and started fighting again. If that was adult, over, I think it's five or 10 people, that's mob action, gang activity, a bunch of other charges. Should have been levied to stop it. And then it spills in into sweet delight. That's a business. A lot of trespass warnings was served that day. Should have been a live arrest, not trespass. Stop smacking these kids on the hands. Thank you.
Thank you.
Duane Womack with Street Friends, Quest Cities, and also representing Giorgentina Lang Foundation. I want to say thank you to the city councilman and mayor for helping us, donating money so we could buy stuff for our homeless people here in Davenport. Today, thank you to Tiffany for spending some time at Walmart with me. We were able to buy 27 coats, brand-new coats, 40 blankets, seven sleeping bags, six pairs of boots, 84 pairs of socks. We were, we got sweatpants, 10 pairs of sweatpants, seven sweatshirts, about 100 toothbrushes and toothpaste, 100 bars of soap, 35 packs of wipes, 50 reusable Walmart bags that we need to start making care bags so I can take them out, too. So, if y'all are available, come to my house. Two totes to store some of the stuff in, 292 granola bars and 200 Rice Krispie Treats that we'll put them in them with our bags. Without you guys' help and dedication to helping our street friends, we wouldn't be able to have a start on for the winter, so thank you very much.
Thank you for what you do. Anyone else? I'm pausing, so make sure nobody else. Okay. Anything else, Ms. Spiegel? Is our motion adjourned? Motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Have a good weekend.